Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen and we'll go into the presentation. So to the beginning of the presentation. Apologize, let me just get this all set up again. Here we go.
You know how this goes. We just tested this and it was perfect. Hang in there, it is there.
Okay.
There we go. I can see your screen, but it's just, it's like got several things, all your windows. There you go. There we are. Everybody see okay?
Great.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, let's jump into this. Melissa, do you want to give us a little bit of an introduction to how, what we're up to and what's going on tonight?
Absolutely. Yes, I'm just very excited to welcome everyone back for session number four. Again, these few months have been very full of a lot of really great conversations with the community. And it's exciting to be here now, kind of closing out this part of the process. And we're just so grateful to each of you. I know I've said this in each meeting, but we are truly grateful for the time and thought that you have put into participating with us in this process. We hope you're enjoying the experience. And we're excited to be able to pick up where we left off at where we left off at our last meeting. And we have since we last met concluded the community input gathering phase for this part of the project. And so we'll able to, JR will present kind of the concluding summary of the input that we have gathered. The final numbers of folks that participated in the survey. And we're excited to share that with you. Certainly, we could spend the full two hours just going into all the details of that. But we don't have time to do that. So we have attempted to cover the high points there. So that we can spend time finalizing the vision framework and then really getting into the strategic recommendations that are coming out of this process. And hearing your recommendations and your reactions to the consultant and staff recommendations. Before we then talk a little bit about our next steps. And again, we are just very excited to jump into that. And so from there, I will pass it back to JR.
Thank you, Melissa. So where we are right now, so we've been meeting for a while now. And the last time we met, we worked on refining the vision framework. As well as reviewing some of our preliminary recommendations as your consultant team. And since we've met, we've concluded our community input, the surveys closed, we finished our interviews, we've finished collecting comments. We further refined and developed the vision framework, which was shared with you all. And it was reviewed by the library staff team as well as this project team. And so tonight, what we're going to go through is a high level summary of community input. We're going to finalize the vision framework and then hopefully you all will recommend the vision framework move forward. And so this is just a recap of all the meetings we've had from meeting one to meeting four. And so you can see like the point of tonight's meeting is really kind of a wrap up and conclusion of the vision framework. So wanted to go a little bit into the final community input summation. We had interviews with over a hundred different informants. The final count of online surveys was 2,790, just unbelievable, great response rate. We have four focus groups. We received 144 written comments across the various media types. And we've had five community forums. Two of those were virtual. So as far as the interviews go, I've presented them twice now, the different findings to you all. And so I don't need to go into as much detail about them. I think the key thing here is after, even after receiving all of the different feedback from the focus groups and the feedback from the comment cards. The, everything agrees with what we're seeing from the interviews. Challenges, these are the four main groupings of challenges. They're certainly not the only challenges in the community. But these are the four main ones that come to the surface affordability, changing demographics, infrastructure and disparities between served and underserved. In terms of role of the library, again, welcoming for everyone, trusted source for information, a place for learning, a place for gathering. As far as barriers go, the three themes that we have, you know, that we've presented still stand accessibility, building condition and amenities and this concept of awareness. And as far as future imperatives go, another location responsiveness to future needs, an updated building and amenities and being welcoming. So the focus groups we had, fifth grade leadership from River Grove Elementary and River Grove PTO. We reviewed some of those findings last time and Christine Moses was actually the one facilitating those focus groups. We also had focus groups with senior communities and the first edition neighborhood. And the feedback that we received from them, again, corroborates the interview themes that we presented earlier. Many of the same messages were heard. Something new that really hasn't been presented to you all yet, yet is the various comments that were received and kind of a summary of what those comments entailed. Now, the thing that's unique about the comment cards, the social pinpoint and the vision boards is these are passive information gathering points. So there's not a facilitator there engaging people in the conversation. So people are a bit more you know, they, they, they tend to write about different things than what we have typically asked about. So you'll see a lot of things in there like suggestions or requests for very specific types of library services, that sort of thing. And of course, that feedback will be given to the library. But we did organize the comments that we received into these four kind of categories. Comments related to spaces and facilities, diversity and representation, service suggestions and requests and access and convenience. And so much like I did with the comment cards when I was presenting them to you in the past, I've I've put out the different themes and just a few quotes of the comments that kind of fit into the themes to give you a sampling of the types of comments we received. Does everybody have a chance to read those? Right. And then for what we called service suggestions and requests and access and convenience, these are kind of a few samples, selected samples of the types of comments we received. Has everyone had a chance to read it? Are there any thoughts or comments about just any of the comment card comments we've received? Again, everything, we're seeing, everything corroborates each other. We're seeing a lot of, of things that support the direction that we've been heading. So these are the final social pinpoint numbers. And I did want to highlight a few of the survey responses. Like Melissa said, we could spend all night going through survey responses. There's a ton of data. It also takes a very long time for us to analyze some of these, especially the qualitative ones. And that's really what we're doing as a consultant team right now and preparing our engagement report for you. Is for these comments, for these questions where we received almost a thousand comments on just one question. We're actually going through the process of reading through them and summarizing them into themes that are digestible and meaningful to the community. You know, a sheet of paper or, you know, 40 sheets of paper with a thousand comments on it is not digestible or usable by the community. And so as your consultant team, that's what we're going through right now to really help with that. So this is the final count of where people were from. We had 2,240 people answer this question. 304 respondents were from Mountain Park, 193 from Palisades, 192 from First Edition and 190 said they didn't live in Lake Oswego. So pretty good representation from throughout the city here. And not one of the neighborhoods that we listed received zero. So pretty good response rate. For the demographic question, this is, this is the last one. How old are you? So again, pretty large representation from 65 and older. And then as far as younger people, not as much representation. But again, then it's good that we did those focus groups with the schools because those were clearly a group that we needed to make sure we were having in-depth conversations with. Any questions or thoughts about the neighborhood or age questions? Okay, great. So I want to show you one of the questions that we did a really deep dive on and kind of give you an example of some of the analysis that's coming later in the engagement report we're preparing for you. So this was question 10, which was in your own words, what's your vision for the future of the Lake Oswego Public Library? And like I said before, we have 952 responses to this question. And so when you look at the word cloud for this, the word that appeared most was library. And that's usually the case with library survey questions that are open ended. You hear library gets mentioned a lot. Communities, books, space came up quite a bit too. So in reading through it, if we had to identify key themes into this and put it into a digestible format for a presentation, the length of this one. These were some of the key themes and ideas that came out of this question. A strong emphasis on expanding the library's reach and accessibility. A lot of comments talking about the library being accessible, both in proximity as well as for people with disabilities. This concept of creating a space for community gathering, sharing ideas and enjoying art, these were all things that came up quite a bit. I loved this concept of fostering growth of hearts and minds through reading. Again, kind of remembering the, one of the library's core missions of literacy and collections. And again, it corroborates what we've seen in other survey data as well as your own circulation data that the collection is very popular. Ensuring safe access to literacy for all community members. Embracing diversity and providing a welcoming space for everyone. A lot of comments were in there about that. And facility, facilitating connections and community engagement. And so again, what's great about this is again, it supports the, again, it further supports the direction we're heading with the vision framework. And as we move forward with the engagement report for the community. This will provide a much deeper detail and deeper dive into just the different feedback we received. Are there any questions, comments or thoughts about this particular survey question? Okay. Great. So now let's talk about the vision framework. And so it's been developed successfully over the last, you know, February through May, through four tasks, four sessions now. It was informed by the task force collective community knowledge and the input obtained through the community engagement process. The document was sent to you all and hopefully you all have had a chance to read it. A lot of work went into it this past month to incorporate all of the different feedback you gave us as a group. And then to work with the staff team to then further refine it into it. And so today, we're really hopeful that we can get your feedback and final insights on it as we move forward. So now we're going to do kind of a fun interactive thing. So if you have a phone or if you have another web browser, you can open it up there too. Please go to menti.com, M E N T I dot com. And when you're at that website, enter in this, this code. Great. We've got four people in, five, seven, good. Neller, Melissa, can you help me with count? How many community task force members here do we have? And I also have survey responses from a few people who couldn't make the meeting. And so I also will be entering in theirs. All right, great. All right. So it looks like we have eight yeses and zero no's. Nine yeses. Great, 10 yeses.
One of those yeses is from me.
Yes. Good. And the survey we had for, the survey we sent out ahead of time, there were four people who responded to it. And they all said yes as well. There were four yeses from that survey. So we all said yes. There's still an opportunity here for us to talk a little bit about what concepts should be added or changed. Even though we all said yes. So this is a chance, if you're on mentee, you can still enter in your thoughts about anything related to the vision framework that you know, you would like for us to discuss or talk about in some more detail. And as people enter things, it'll pop up here. All right. So it sounds like we're pretty good with the vision framework. Is that what I'm hearing? Good. Okay. All right. So let's talk about these items. Who wants to start us off with the discussion of I'd like to add the word safe? Where would you like to add it?
Not really sure where, but all along, the library should be a safe place for all ages. And somehow that was missing in everything I read.
Okay.
That's just important to me, maybe no one else.
What do you all think? Ruth or Jason, do you all, what do you all think about that?
I think it is, it's, it's a concept that was.
Ruth?
I think we're having some connection issues, Ruth. I'm sorry.
Yeah, shoot. I'll send her.
Yeah, maybe she can try calling in. All right. Well, while, while we're waiting for Ruth to get back about the concept of safe. Why don't we shift over to the discussion around a sense of collaboration with other locations? Who was, um, who wants to lead us off with that discussion?
Um, I want, I, I, I wrote that one up and I, um, the one thing that we, we I know in some of the conversations we had in previous meetings was that some, a few people had mentioned they'd gone to other libraries because they had something really, really awesome that that library can do. So I'm wondering, and I, I think I brought this up last time too, and I said, well, we know we're good at something too. We can highlight that, but then we should also like kind of collaborate with other libraries to kind of highlight each others, what we're really good at, just to kind of make sure that library in itself is a community of other libraries. Even though LO's library is, it's amazing for our community. It, it, there's almost something where we can't be everything to everyone, right? And so we want to make sure that if they don't find their needs met within LO, at least we would know and have some way to share that these other areas also have these things and fostering those relationships will kind of fill the gaps that we know we just can't fill because we don't have the resources, we don't have the space, et cetera. So I kind of wanted to see how that could also fit in some of that kind of what does community mean on a, on a broader scale.
That's great. What about lifelong learning?
I think it's covered under the learning hub for all, but I was kind of looking for the background of why. More about why we need to continually change because we're meeting the next generation in the way that they're learning today and designing a library that meets those needs tomorrow when they're older. And I know it says to meet the needs of everybody at the learning styles, but I just would like a little more why in there.
Yeah, let's talk about that. So as a group, what do we think about that? You know, in terms of the why? You know, I think like in a way, it speaks to a little bit of the you know, having to be ready for the unexpected or for, for the ways things might change that we can anticipate. And so I think the vision contemplates having that type of flexibility.
So would that be like in the last page, the last row where we talk about learning, but then at the same time, we're saying that we're trying to improve resilience and thriving in a way? Is that the intent for that? Or is it really just the learning a skill, learning a subject kind of thing?
I was looking at the learning hub for all. Where, where are you looking at?
I was looking at the last page. And they talk about individual and community resilience and thriving. As an outcome or result. Would that tie to what you're saying was?
I think it it, yes, it ties to it. I I don't know how, how much we have to spell out, but it's a big document. I think we're there.
Oh, good. Ruth, Ruth is back. Ruth, are you back?
Yeah, she left a chat. I don't know, Ruth, if you want me to read it. I'll read it and then if you can speak to it. Ruth says, I was saying that regarding a safe place, we heard that throughout the process and its omission was inadvertent, it should be in there.
Okay.
You know, JR, I think, um,
Yeah, Jason.
Couple of things and, and I know guys, there's a lot here and I love this conversation. I think when I look at hub of community and results being in access to a safe place with the general description being that the library is inviting, welcoming spacious and so forth and so on. I'm going back to the comment on safe. I think that we definitely wanted to bring that in and that was certainly our intent. I think that's an excellent observation. And then collaboration with other locations, I think we're almost there in my opinion. But when we talk about inspiring, supporting collaborative energy. And it doesn't quite, you know, it talks about cohesion, you know, and progress, things like that. But I think the opportunity to talk about partnerships might be certainly an opportunity. Just, it's, it's, I think there may be the opportunity to be more clear, I guess I'm trying to say, JR. And I think we're, we're almost there. We're, we're very, very close and it may just be an omission of a word frankly. Or two about, about more about in that description about partnerships, you know, something along those lines.
Yeah. So I think that's good. So, so basically what I'm hearing is, you know, if we can add that word safe. And then maybe add a statement about collaboration with other locations. With those two additions, we're feeling pretty good about the vision framework. Okay. Great. All right, good. Well, now I'd like to shift into talking about recommendations. So when we last met, we presented to you two concepts of consultant generated recommendations, two models. It was a, it was an optimum model, which was two libraries and an improved model, which was a renovation of the existing building. And since that time, we've had an opportunity to collaborate with staff, to collaborate with city council and to refine those recommendations into three new models that have been developed with staff and your consultant team. And so these strategic recommendations, so now we have three of them that we're calling A, B and C, simplifying the names. They're still guided by the vision framework. They still provide a basis for gauging levels of community support. We'll need to include capital and operating cost estimates and high level assessments of possible funding. And they still are going to need architectural renderings. But here are the recommendations. So model A was the optimum model, which is two libraries, right? You need two libraries. You renovate the existing library. Improved parking and pedestrian access. And then you have a full service library on the west side of the city. And in this location, or if you renovate the existing library and you shift stuff around, you have modern amenities at each location, cafe space came up quite a bit. Educational areas, reservable rooms, maker space and other types of creative spaces. Updated technologies, dedicated teen areas, flexible multipurpose meeting space and outdoor space and on and on. Also remembering to contain adequate collection space. So this is the, you know, the preferred model. This is certainly as your consultant team, what we would recommend. But we've also worked with staff to develop alternatives. So model B would be replacing the existing library with a larger one. So it's a one library system, right? Now wherever you put that library in the city, there's still a chunk of the city that's not served by library services. If you put it on, if you put your one library on the west side of the city, then the east side of the city has the problems that the west side of the city currently has. So you need to have strategically located service outposts and mobile services throughout the community. In order to help alleviate some of those disparities. In this new library, you could include modern amenities like we just explained. And also ensure that you had adequate collection spaces, adequate parking and pedestrian access. The steps for moving forward with this type of model are listed to the right and they're the same for each of the models. Model C is a, a variation of the original recommendation of an alternative. Which was instead of building a two library system or building one new library, you still remain a one library system, but you renovate the existing facility to get the most To get the most modern amenities you possibly could in it while still maintaining your existing collection and other core services. In this one model system, you're going to need strategically located service outposts and mobile services from the west side of the city. In order to provide the type of library services throughout the community that this visioning framework envisions.
Can I jump in here, JR? From the staff perspective, we feel that if if Model C was the direction that. We were going as a community, we would be able to add some of the modern amenities. But I think to do that, we would be looking at reductions to the physical collection size. Certainly, we would still have a really wonderful collection because that's what we do, but I think. Just the reality is there's limited square footage that we're dealing with and to add amenities, we would have to make reductions. To some somewhere. You know, it's possible that we could have collapsible stacks or something like that so that we could still maintain a lot of that shelf space, but. Think there would certainly be limitations and constraints to this model that. We would we'd have to make more compromises.
Yeah, well, well said, Melissa. It's a, you know, there are a lot of limitations with the existing facility. And even with the best type of renovations in it. You can only add the modern amenities by sacrificing some of the current services. Just because of the limitations of the space. Another thing, concept that's been added here is the the seismic retrofitting. And we'll put it here. So regardless of which model you pick, these four things remain true, all right? You have to design for accessibility, seismic safety, sustainability, and rapidly evolving technology. You have to supplement library facilities with robust virtual presence, mobile services. And strategically located service outposts for maximum community access. You just can't, there's no one perfect location in the city that will preclude you needing. Additional service outposts for maximum community output, maximum community access. It's just the geographical layout of the city. Regardless of which model, you need to conduct a full architectural assessment of the current facility. With designs for modernizing and adding amenities according to the chosen service model. It's a forty year old building. There there are things you need to, you're going to need to do this assessment regardless. Finally, continue to hold to high standards of service and intentionally and proactively adopt the values and rules of the vision framework. It's the basis for all of the future. Library work when it comes to this and strategic plan later in the year. Are there any thoughts or questions or comments about any of the recommendations? Well, this kind of, this now brings us to one of the main points of this exercise, which is task force recommendations and next step. So we have two big questions for you all. Which are, does the task force recommend the vision framework and are there suggestions, ideas, recommendations? Or next steps that you think should be included for forwarding to the city council? And because we're online, we can do it like this. So if you go to mentee.com. And load it up, we have a couple more questions for you. Yes. So. Right. Great. Are there any thoughts or comments about this one?
Should have three more.
All right. Anyone else want to jump in or any thoughts or comments?
Is this a good time for me to lavish praise on everyone? I'm just really grateful again for all of your work on the vision framework and I. A number of people have commented, a number of folks reached out who weren't able to join us tonight and just said, I hope that. You're feeling really good about how. The community feels about the library and what is in this vision framework because it is just really what articulates very well. The value that our library provides to the community and. All the the great outcomes that the library helps to create for the community. So I. I definitely am feeling that way and I'm excited about this document and to present that to. City council and the community at large as we move forward in this process. So I just thought now might be a good time to let you all know. Our feelings about that and to thank you again for your great work to create this document. It definitely. I just get goosebumps as I read it. So, thank you and great job.
Yeah, well said, Melissa. Thanks again to all the task force members who worked very hard on it and provided such great feedback. So for our last question, we have. Are there suggestions, ideas, recommendations or next steps that you think should be included for forwarding to the city council? So if you go to mentee and load it up, you can input your questions. I tried to pre-populate it with some of the responses we received in the survey. So that's a few of the answers you'll see there. And so from people who had filled out the surveys, it said, it's clear that the library means many different things to our community. Nothing additional to add. You all have done an outstanding job. Thank you. And then the the next three were from one comment. I just couldn't fit them all into one comment bubble. And said, as the library evolves over the next few decades, it needs the locations and space to allow for public gatherings. That offer opportunity for positive interactions of diverse groups and interests. Finding ways to accomplish this through public partnerships, public, private partnerships. And other funding mechanisms should be prioritized in the planning of the Lake Oswego Library's future. Feels very comprehensive and nicely articulated. Are there any other things or comments we want to make in terms of what's going to city council and? Or anything else related to moving forward with this?
Ami has her hand.
I'll put it in the comments, but I'm typing and probably not typing fast enough to get it in there. And it it looks really comprehensive. It's amazing. Just change is hard, even if change is for the better. And so considering all of this and the three proposals and everything else, I think, and and sure that leadership knows this and understands this, but. Trying to really focus on how any change or any proposal can be really made amenable to. As demonstrated, all the different people that our library serves, right? We can't please everybody, but. We can give them an opportunity to voice any concerns or meet us at the table for a discussion and better understanding. We have the advantage of having gone through this incredible process and understanding how we got here. But the community may not whenever something comes their way. So. Any way that that can be facilitated, and I know that's just asking for more time from everybody, all you who have put in so much time. So. I understand, but just wanted to share that.
The great, great comment and great thought and, you know, certainly your role says people who are aware and also. Available to advocate for this. You all do play an important role because you are the community members who are most informed about this at this point.
And we'll talk more about next steps. In in just a moment here, but we will certainly be continuing to engage with the community around these concepts and. Provide opportunities for those conversations as we move forward. There's still. We're wrapping up this. Data gathering, public engagement piece of the process, but there will definitely be future phases as we. Detail these models and develop cost estimates for council, get their feedback on that. And continue to get the community's feedback. To figure out how we move forward from here. And I'm. Definitely would be interested to hear any thoughts from task force members about the the models. That were presented here. I think council would certainly will certainly. Want to know as well your thoughts as as those most informed community members at this point. As the folks that have. You know, heard a number of presentations from Barry Dunn and team about the community input and. You know, really worked intimately through this process. So please consider that an open invitation if anyone wants to share their thoughts about those models.
Yeah, and if you have thoughts about the models, please go ahead and put them into this block. Because we can, we are saving all of these comments and we can. You know, easily transfer them.
I have a question about the models.
Yeah.
As they're proposed. Each of one of them has, you know, another solution built in for. This expanding the service area or how we serve others. Is there a version of this that would just include? Improving our current space and not. Having, not that we would recommend that, but I'm saying, is that somewhere where the community might end up? Or is it kind of, these are the three and these are the three options to pick from?
Yeah, there's certainly, yeah, go ahead, Melissa, please, sorry.
You know, I'm I never want to say. I always want to be open to options and what, you know, what we may hear and what may come our direction, but my sense is that from this process, it would not be. Accurate to recommend. Or to move forward with a plan that does not meet or make a. Much greater effort to meet the needs of the underserved. Community members and areas of the community. Through this process, we have, we understand a lot more about what those needs are. And I I don't think we can come out of this process and not address those needs. Certainly, that would not be an acceptable outcome for me. So I think. I don't see that as an as an outcome that we wouldn't provide more support. To those mobile services and service outposts, you know, if, for example. Model C might be closest to what you had just described, fixing up our current facility. But again, there's a huge underserved part of our community right now and we need to. Put our resources into serving them. So. Again, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do not, I personally don't think that an outcome would be not addressing those needs. I think at the bare minimum, we would have the service outpost and mobile services to do that, if not a larger facility or an additional facility to do that.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the June twenty seventh meeting, when you present all this. Are you giving the city council A, B, and C and letting them decide which one?
We are going to be recommending. That they consider these options and that we do, that we get cost estimates. That we move forward with getting cost estimates for capital costs and operating costs for the three models. It's certainly possible that they may say, we already know, we don't want you to spend time on this or that. But. And correct me if I'm wrong, consultant team, but that's my understanding is that the we will, the consultant team will present. That from this process, Model A is the optimum model from what we've heard from the community. That be Model B and C are alternatives that could be considered. And recommending that we move forward to get the capital and operating cost estimates for those models so that we have. Really enough information to be able to. Eliminate some, hone in on on some and eventually get to the one model that will. Meet the most needs and be within budget, et cetera. And please feel free, other team members to jump in and add your thoughts.
Yeah, Melissa, that that that's accurate. I would say that a part of that is certainly creating some flexible path, right? So so council and 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 others have options. As we try to provide better service and expand the service to the community. So that's why we would, you know, go through those options and present those in the manner that Melissa just stated. So, yes, and you know, one one other thing real quick is there was a question about what about improving the current library? And I know that, you know, we're focusing on how to provide equitable and services throughout the community. I do want to give credit though to Melissa and team. They have been improving the library. They really have in a variety of ways over the years. To to move the needle, to provide different ways of providing service in the existing library. I I know Melissa and team continue to do to work as hard as they can to evolve as a community is involved. And yet there is still obviously limitations. So I just had to say that and and so I appreciate Melissa and team's work on. Evolving as best as possible in the space that they're given.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I also noticed a concern saying relating to how long the library. Services would be inaccessible due to construction. Could books still be accessed through the bookmobile? You know, we haven't gotten ahead that far ahead in the planning, certainly, but I know in the past when there have, when there was a major remodel. Or maybe it was when this building was rebuilt, because there was an original library on on this site. But there we did. At that time, lease another location. I may, we may have worked with the school district as I seem to recall. So that we were able to have. You know, a library outlet accessible during the construction. So I would say I would definitely anticipate that and that is part of the cost estimating that we would do. If one for the models that might involve. Remodeling. Understanding what the cost might be to have a temporary location for the library and the moving costs and some of those things and. I think as we continue to work toward our mobile services, certainly that would be a solution as well to be able to get access to library services.
Yeah, that would, I agree with you, Melissa. That would certainly be something you all would would consider and plan for. If if there was an eventuality or scenario where. The main location wouldn't be available. Alternative service options would be planned for.
Yes, definitely. Because we wouldn't want a long. Period with no access to the library. That would, that would be no good. We'll plan around that.
There's also, I saw in the chat, there was a question from Ruth, just asking generally what people thought about the models.
Would you mind putting up the slide again for the options?
Yeah, of course.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So here's Model A. So here's model A. Model B. And here's model C.
Hands down, for me, would be model A for sure.
Yeah.
That'd be the pie in the sky, you know, the visions of the future.
Yeah, we agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think model A is ideal because it seems to have pretty much everything that we've brought up. About physical changes, at least with the previous meetings.
Thank you. Yeah, and then it looks like Madonna Lisa says if money wasn't an issue, definitely two full-size libraries.
I think the question on the table would be, what is the appetite of the Lake Oswego community to fund? You know, the model A, which is, you know, the best that, you know. Coming out of this, this. These sessions.
Yeah.
You nailed it, Lisa. That's really the question. I think that will, we will come to.
That's always the bottom line, isn't it?
Yes.
And so what's good about this is as a task force, you can say at least that, you know, you developed a vision with all the. You know, all the input that you were processing. And from that, the vision was at least this. And then, you know, in terms of implementing the vision. When reality has to settle in and maybe alternatives have to be considered. You know, that's the discussion they can have later. But this is appropriate for where we are in the visioning process.
There was a previous question that you had asked of what other information could be provided and I'm wondering. To go with the model A, if there's any stories that we can get as success stories from other libraries where their communities. Were uplifted or there was more people coming in or there was more money coming into the city because. A library was one of their selling points or not a selling point, but it really just brought the community closer together or. Something along that lines, like whatever those kinds of KPIs that are related to what we want as a community as well and what these. This framework and this vision actually reflects, maybe so amazing to to continue that storytelling about. You know, this city and that city, same demographics, they they had an explosion in growth. Or amenities or whatnot, or better community engagement because they had a library improvement project or something like that. I mean, that would be an amazing story to add. When you slip model A story on the table. I just think it's, it's very compelling, especially all the work we've done as a, as a group that this is, this is gonna make the community stronger.
I love that, Madonna Lisa. That was just a beautiful way of expressing that. And I think, you know, we presented to council preliminarily, or is that just earlier this month? I think it was in May. It feels like longer ago now. And that is one of the things that the councilor said that they would like to hear. And see more of those examples. One thing that we're working toward is taking. A few field trips to other libraries and taking some of the council members with us to do that. And as well as, again, bringing in those stories, you know, I have been collecting articles and for a number of years now. So I have a little, a little file. All, any article that I see, any mention that I see of just what you were talking about, Madonna Lisa, how a new library or library renovation. Had lifted up a community. And so I, I have a lot of those things at my fingertips. And certainly if any of you have recently seen an article or an example like that, feel free to send that my way. I would love to to add that in. But I think that's gonna be a big piece of. Of this next presentation to to council. Again, because it, the storytelling aspect is important. To really talk about the the benefits that this will bring to our community and to be able to talk. And have those anecdotal stories of how that has already happened in other communities. I think that's gonna be super powerful.
Absolutely. And Ruth adds, all of the outcomes Madonna Lisa named are true and there are many examples and also studies that show the economic benefit. Right. Alright. Well, thank you for all these comments. Like I said, we can download all of these and so. Melissa and her team will have all of these comments as we are working to prepare to. Move this vision framework forward to city council. Melissa, do you wanna kinda talk about some next steps and what's gonna happen from here?
Yes, our presentation to council has been rescheduled to July eighteenth. So we are preparing for that and part of that will be the final engagement report. And as JR has alluded to here, we do plan to share that final report with this group as well. Cause I know you will be very interested in in that and hopefully we'll continue to kinda keep tabs on what. Happens in the future and certainly we want to keep in contact with you all as well. We've really appreciated all of your engagement. And although, you know, we're concluding what you had signed up for as a task force member. To the extent that you're willing to to stay involved and engaged, we would love to continue to. Work with you and and hear your thoughts on this process. So we'll definitely share that engagement report with you when it's available. We are working on a number of fronts right now. You know, consultant team is finalizing that report. City staff are working on preparing preliminary cost estimates. They're gonna be very high. Level magnitude for July eighteenth. And then we'll, we'll need more time to get into the, the really detailed cost estimates for the models that we're moving forward with. Assuming council gives us the blessing to to go forth and. Get, get to that level of detail on those options. And we'll also be starting our strategic planning process. Regardless of where, what direction we might receive from council on these models, we have heard so much. From the community in this process, we have the vision framework. And we will be using all of those inputs from the community. To guide us in developing a strategic plan for the library. There's. Just a lot of exciting. Information for us to process as we do that. And we will be presenting, as I said, to council on July eighteenth. The engagement findings, the vision framework and the recommendations. And we'll be hearing council's direction on how to move forward from there. And we'll also be sharing with council our plan for the next round of community engagement. We, it's gonna be really important to let the community know what we heard in this process, how we got to where we are now. And. Give opportunities for a community to weigh in on the models that are being considered. Cause of course, in it, we really need to. As we move forward, understand how the community feels about those options. Making sure that needs are being met as well as assessing level of support to invest in one of those options. And we'll be sketching out that next round of community engagement, letting council know what that might look like, getting their input on that as well. So that we can move forward with the the next phase of this process. So we are really excited to be doing that. And again. At, I would expect that. We will reach out to the task force in the future. To share information with you, to seek your feedback and. I think there's a lot of interest in the group getting back together for some kind of a celebratory event at some point too. So. Expect an invitation for some, some sort of a social event in the future as well.
Great, thank you, Melissa. Just, here's that timeline, again, kind of. The whole process and what we've been through. And here we are going into June and July, which is the home stretch, so to speak. Alright, and this is the end of the presentation. Are there any closing remarks and feedback or additional things we wanna talk about?
Jared, just a thank you from me and the consultant team. I think that. This, this group was the most engaged that we've had and just how, how. Just how engaged and how. The input, taking everything very. You know, the heart and and taking time to review and provide input. I just really appreciate the full group's hard effort and. I know it'll, it'll pay dividends for, for the community. I know that. So thank you, everyone. That's. That's really all I have, Jared, for me.
That's great, Chase, and thank you. And I definitely echo those sentiments. You all are wonderful. You are. Caring and obviously have poured a lot of your, your effort and. You know, you're just great insights into this process. So thank you. And I think Lake Oswego is really moving forward in a fun and exciting way. And there's exciting things for the future. So thank you. It's been great working with all of you.
Oh, great. I just wanna say thank you all for doing such a great job and pulling all this together. It certainly was no small feat. Working across the community and with the task force and the survey and the focus groups and it's been a pleasure and it's been great. I've been really thankful for having been on the task force. So thanks. And working with, you know, everyone on the team, it was great, getting to know people as well and meeting folks. Everyone had great ideas. So thank you all for letting us be on, on this task force and contributing.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm so grateful to all of our task force members and to our consultant team. It's definitely been a team effort all along the way and I just can't thank you all enough. Thank you, Barry Dunn team. Thank you, task force team. And yeah, I'm, I'm, I must say I'm a little bit sad that it's our last. Meeting of the task force, cause it's been so wonderful to work with you all, but hopefully we can, you know, continue. Our relationship and. Continue to stay in touch and stay engaged in this project.
Thank you, everybody, and make sure you stop by. We'd love to see you.
Yeah, yeah. Nell and I are up on the second floor of the library. Come say hi.